Evening, Council. Tonight is sort of another stage in our info series on debt financing and projects in the borough. And as we talked about since our last regular meeting, about project creep and things that we're discovering that we need to be talking about from a financial standpoint and completing them. If you're looking for a minute, I want to think about how we left all our discussions with Governor Calhoun. Last thing on the treatment plan. As I've added some slides. Sit forward here. Find all the projects regarding what we're looking at. Just solely in ways where our treatment plan. And we came up with this number, and we started on 6.3 million. And I think the discussions where we're at now is Hatch is working currently to sharpen those numbers, both from a construction standpoint, but also from engineering design standpoint, as well as oversight of construction projects themselves and permitting. So we'll have a better number, and I've told them next seven to 14 days have those numbers for us. So we're working on that right now. What we want to discuss is moving forward. Non-revenue debt capital, meaning projects will be funded through the general fund budget. Now, in terms of projects, we'll be very specific, and we'll see, this is a Boulevard project or this is Sub-2 project. It still generates out of the general funds, so we have to be able to understand how that impact happens to our general fund ultimately, milled drains, DIP, that sort of thing. So in this, we also include the general debt we talked about before, which is existing in the borough, which after maturity would be about $607,000. Refinancing that, Joe had part of that presentation this evening, so we incorporate that. And again, the reader, these are things that are outside the treatment plant, and they're not conclusive, nor are we completing that yet. Senate is still working on some of those for us. The focus of the projects we've been looking at is the Boulevard project, and we've talked about the handrail replacement. They've been trying to do the Boulevard preventive maintenance. What Senate has done for us is done the assessment of the guardrail and handrail on the quarter valley and River Boulevard. And they've seen, obviously, when they capture the pot marks of the concrete, the handrails and mark was starting to look out of the concrete, and they're starting to corrode the base. What Senate has in their hand right now is a $90,000 repair bill just to do it by hand, spot repairs, but paint everything. What we're attempting to get is a bid to replace everything at one time with brand-new materials, less corrosive than we have currently out there. They're still working on it. Their real challenge is getting calls back from vendors who are just wanting to give us a number, but we're trying to narrow that down. The other project in the role, whether well, the Boulevard is trying to replace the streetlights on Allegan River Boulevard. There's about 46 in total. They've tried for two grant applications. They've made a third attempt this year. We do know based on the grant applications from the engineer consultant that was used, we're looking somewhere between $265,000 and $300,000. That was 2019 money, so we'd sharpened that too. But this is a project, again, I think there's a point we sit here and say, we have to finance this or it's not going to get done. Because multimodal is not interested in the streetlights, they're interested in traffic and communication. I've said this off the cuff a couple of times and discussed about the facility to get the street department out of our basements in their own facility, and preferably down next to the syrup plant. I'm sorry for the purple rendering that's down, mostly my hand, but we're looking at something right now that's about 150 feet long, anywhere from 35 to 40 feet deep. It could fit. It can fit. It's a cost. Amber gave me a bag of the envelope, estimate of just over $1 million to build a standalone steel structure with internal workings of an office space, lounge area for employees. But the entire goal was to get everything we have in equipment in one facility and out of the exposures.
Is that really worth my, I don't mean a million dollars for three-person departments?
We have the profile, we have the equipment. The equipment is what's offered 3B with one equipment that we have and where does it fit. We have equipment here, we have equipment in two garages here, and we have equipment down the other lane too. And we can, we'll expand upon that, so I'm not, I'm not agreeing with the dimension size they gave us, but we have to look at where we currently have all our facilities or our equipment. And this is the reason why I keep talking about this. This is currently how the employees come to work every morning. This is under there, underneath the main administrative building. Kevin Flyer's first text to me when I took the job was, ask Mike Huber if they got rid of the bats. There are bats on the roof of the basement. We got rid of them, just so you know. The first picture in the upper-left corner, that is where you approach the employee's entrance and then looking back into the basement. The second picture to the right is we still get that couch looking back towards where they sit, and they report to work every day. That is their bathroom facilities, which is about the cleanest of everything they have. And just for example, I'm standing by the couch, and that's how much, how much headspace they have there. And I just found where the work pipes, you can see the conduit running next to my head there. So you're an apartment duck when they go to work every day, and they're employed. And I'm not going to call the employee resting, but essentially that's where they are for lunch, checking in, checking out, phone calls, desks, that's where they go. This is their garage. So we actually have a five-day garage. We have two banks on the Dogwood Way. We have two on this side right here at the building, and then we have one down here. So we already have a five-day garage, which is five locations, three locations. This, the picture in the upper-right corner is looking all the way through some Dogwood Way down through the garage to the old existing building. The lower building here, and here is immediately under the original footprint of the Borough building. It is dark. We had fixed a flooding problem there before. They put a sun pump in and disdurned water. Water does leak through the foundations against Fifth Street.
Let me just ask one question here. Just ask the nuclear option. If you were to transition the street department to a services contractor, private contractor, who would be responsible for the equipment, its storage, maintenance, et cetera?
We would not have any equipment. At the garage, we would not own any equipment. We wouldn't own anything. Mike Huber readily admits that we're still doing housekeeping and getting rid of stuff we don't need, but a lot of stuff there is just, there's not enough force to store everything. What opened the show here is we talked about a 35 to 40-foot-deep big wall bed. This is the garage door. That's the back wall, and the plows on the couch in the truck right now. In the winter time, they typically keep all the equipment ready to go, plows on, hoppers on the beds. Don't fit that garage. They just don't fit. And so we're looking at where do you store it, but only when you store it, when you're ready, you want to learn times everything attached. A plow not attached literally takes 15 to 20 minutes off of your time of response on a winter operation. I've experienced in two different locations where our, the night before storm events, our trucks are ready to go that evening at a moment that is loaded and plowed on and ready to go. So this is, you're mobilizing for winter time, but again, that's just how tight it is, not ready for winter time. And lastly, this is my wife's one. We don't know what we have yet in stormwater projects. We don't have a lot of flooding projects. In the phone conversation I had yesterday, Amber has searched highly for her Senate files about point number three of the Engineering Review. If you look in a report, it talks about a stormwater plant from the borough. She can find nothing in Senate's files about the stormwater plant from the borough. She sees the date, it's very exact, cannot find an RFQ or anything, and it just, it totally disappeared off their radar screen, and she doesn't know what's there.
Could part of this bond issue money be used, if she can't find it, to generate such a claim? Do they implement it?
Yes, and yes.
Given a prime estimate.
The plan essentially would be is finding infrastructure needs to be replaced. And she has identified that we have existing M-cast catch bases, the ones that are built in the curves, and phasing them out using regular C caps, which is the two-by-fours that you see in the street. Washington Avenue is a prime example behind Pub 333 where we stopped paving. There's a pipe system there that actually flows backwards. It goes up, it gets placed, but it sits there. Before I got here, I guess the road used to flood a lot, but we took a weir out, so the water now drains, but it still sits there. The flooding went away, so the issue of replacing it went away for a moment. But that intersection alone, the 40, let's see, to be put in the place or collapse in on itself.
So we should not abandon store water projects just because?
We have not identified the difference.
Just because you don't have a specific list of them right now?
Well, when you said that, she went looking for something, I mean, like, three and a half years ago, they were tasked with completing a stormwater study.
The best that she could recall was they were asked to do is find the watersheds and then identify the subwatersheds. And the conversation never came off again to her, or to Jay, and subsequent meetings after that.
You know, it says here, Senate to provide proposal to complete a stormwater study the entire borough as per RFQ the Borough Manager provided, February 6, 2018.
She cannot find RFQ and neither can we. We're still looking for an system.
And then the most recent update was sub watershed delineation has begun.
There was a map that they created that was.
The stormwater study doesn't necessarily get into construction projects. It could be just a hydrology study.
What I think, and I think from her recollection is they came up with two absolute engineering facts. One, two-thirds of the borough floods applies, drains the Plum Creek, and the other third of the borough floods drains to the Allegan River. That was it. That's as far as it got. Senate's not going to do work if the borough doesn't keep on task or something, because they're not going to build water or something. So they received no direction after the sub watershed study that installed. And she doesn't even recall what the study RFQ required them to do, and we're trying to find that now.
So you should not abandon this?
We're not abandoning, if you're trying to identify projects more infrastructure-related.
Right, but what you, but what I think you should do is to put enough money in the bond issue. Fund the study by Senate to identify physical infrastructure related to stormwater, probably by hydrology, and then to implement some percent of their recommendations.
Yeah, I guess like my assumption would be that that would have been what this study would have done. The goal was to find problem areas and things that we could fix. So that, yeah, that, and it's strange to hear her say that she, like, I mean, I guess that could be like a Borough manager situation, and if Lisa was around and then completed, and we have two other people and then a third.
Oh, it sounds, it sounds like they were tasked with the hydrology part of the study, which is the first part of such a study, but not with the physical infrastructure to do something about the findings of the hydrology study.
Yeah, or it sounds like maybe we talked a lot about it, but no one ever wrote down specifically.
Which is quite possible. I mean, it's, they did do two layers on the, on the Borough GIS system that says, here's your watersheds, your subwatersheds, and that's been it, that they've been at charge to, you know, as you build what others want to do. I'll bring up, we're going to keep trying to find it. We're not having any success. And even the date, something is so very date-specific.
Well, and I'm not sure that it's worth wasting time to look for something that probably.
But it might be buried in there, but we just don't see it as the actual capital projects. Now, we focused the infrastructure on sanitary, lighting, and storm, and I would say the enhancements of the downtown board, but we don't talk about any other projects that council might be thinking about. I did hear brickwork conjecture for Allegan River Boulevard going back and doing some new brick repairs that we've done, some that we've done recently, revisiting that. I've not heard anything else that says, hey, we need to do this, because I'm not, in my tears, that's what I've observed, is what I've seen, showed you this evening. But we can talk about apparatus too as a conversation piece. We know the fire department is, is interested in looking at changing their fleet down to one engine and one truck and eliminating any danger. And that's, that's for a continued discussion, but that's another thing that we've.
But we had considered fire truck in this.
I, we were doing it preliminarily at that distance to make that a little more. This is, the ball's hanging on the tee. No pine tip for golf today, but we're, you know, what the next decision is moving forward is, is that decision.
For the street department, the spaces that are underneath this building, are they usable? So if at some point we're going to renovate this space, is it something we could include in a renovation and use those?
Storage.
That basement, that basement has a low stone.
It's a basement. It is, it is, I, I don't know how many council members have ever seen it. I'm looking at a tour.
No, we toured it. We were surprised how dungeon might belong. Yeah, at the time, the street department wanted to stay there because we were talking about where, what else could be done. Person that was headed that in at that time decided he liked, they liked it partly on, we'd understand, but.
We had, we even.
It's a basement. I mean, it's a basement.
We, we deployed the idea of taking the filing room and putting in a more secure room on the opposite end of the building. You have that, when it records, because it's a higher ceiling, right next to the lock facilities. And they just said, it's not worth it. It's just not worth renovating two rooms and just scrapping the entire building apart.
Well, one of the thoughts that I was wondering about with that is whether that area, which is right here, if those parts of the buildings were demolished, and then some kind of temporary roofing, you know, some kind of, like this thing we're talking about, you know, they have that kind of steel structure with a tarp roofing. Whether that could be used either by the fire department or for other equipment, so it would be inexpensive, but it would be great big open space.
We could use the property area, but not the necessary rebuilding area.
Since the street department actually doesn't function in that area in the sense of actually doing their work, if we wanted to give them a better experience for their lunch period and their breaks, the whole second floor of the fire department is unoccupied. And we had talked about making an emergency response area and furnishing it so that there would be computers there. So I think rather, I think we need to look at reallocating resources that we already have and make some unused areas.
Are there any projects that you have in the backside that you thought about that were high on your high-ticket prices that we haven't discussed?
Not that I had the idea that it was a project, but I think it was a topic that we need to give some thought to, and that's the brick roads. Because the, one of the bonds that we would be paying off was for the brickwork on Allegan River Boulevard. And I don't know, I could only think that at some point there's going to have to be some work at some point, and then we don't have a policy in place about the other brick roads. For example, Sixth Street, which is the steep part of Sixth Street that goes down to Plum Street, those, those brick roads, whether we should have in back of our mind their future, any future work that would have to be done with them.
The brick roads from Earl, right, like it's part of either California or, yeah, the upper part of California.
Oh, it's.
College.
It's a teenager, yes.
Bricks there.
Now, if you go to Aspen, and I don't know the name of the street, that runs parallel to where you would enter into St. Louis Hospital. It is remarkable the condition of that route. It's remarkably, it is remarkably bad. And it's just something that they obviously don't think with the resources that appears that they have. They've chosen to not do anything about it.
It might be the traffic.
It is the main, right, it's off the exit, it's off, is that the double tillet? It's off the. To piggyback on Patty's comment, Mount Lebanon, as a council member who works for Carnegie Mellon University, Carnegie Mellon, and she had a team of graduates do a study from Mount Lebanon to preserve and even in case expand on their brick roads in their borough. So I, on that train of thought, they did actually go up on a Capitol project planned for Mount Lebanon. I'd like to take a look down, I might reach out to the professor. I was pretty, we participated as a borough. I was interviewed for about three hours from the students. Shared with them some of the findings that Tim Day will have written up that we use for our specifications of report, specifically at the Boulevard. But they went and took it to the next level because they're going back, they went, at that time, their council was saying, the citizenry really likes the character of the brick roads, how do you preserve it here to go? And I've never seen the here-to-go part of it.
One person that I've seen, I don't go with her, it really fits within a body, she thought would be doing something about the state's sidewalks in the borough, the state of sidewalks in the borough.
Historically, before I was on council, I understand that the borough was divided into sections, and each council member had their own section, and they were given a tool to measure how much a slab of concrete was elevated to determine whether a letter to the residents was issued, and then they had a certain time period during which they needed to correct it. And I believe our ordinance reads that the individual property owners are responsible for the sidewalk in front of the house, so they would have to replace it.
That's true. There's currently no such effort other way to the law. And that, so I, no, I'm just giving you a district. Because that's the reason we started to do that. And it, it was done by, we went out with our rulers and created a list. And most of the town was covered. Some people chose not to really do it. But many of the people did follow through and repair their sidewalks. But that doesn't mean that that shouldn't be something that comes up again, but it's not a big expense.
True. Piggyback on.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I mean. Right. Phil says where I'm going with this. To piggyback on this conversation, Borough Redwood has a sidewalk replacement program where they partner with the residents that are impacted. They do an assessment study and then go back to residents and say, if you piggyback with us, it only costs you half the deal to do the project, we'll cover the other half. But they do assessments by, they don't do a whole borough. They start, they assess based on the area, cover that area, and then move forward. George, I think, when we talked to him in the middle of COVID, they were in their third or fourth year of the plan, and they only budgeted $25,000 annually to do it. Yes, we'll take it to the next level. Talk to George.
That would be, I'm glad, it's a great idea, but one thing is, I just don't think it would end up being big enough for a lawn.
We can see. I mean, that's, you know, unless we want, it'll cost.
Tucked in, it won't be tough.
We'll call George.
It's part of the professional.
Is that part of the professional project?
Before we move on from the, the street department building that you were talking about there, I, I was wondering, given the fact that we can't fit the leaf truck and you've identified some issues with the truck setup for smoke blowing, is there any utility to considering like a carport kind of thing down there just for the paint holes? Or, you know, or is that something that doesn't address what you think is necessary down there?
The units are diesel. So I know we have to, we have to do a plug charging system to keep the diesel engine warm, or they're sitting out down there, they've got a.
They offer. You can get heaters for those.
You can, yeah.
Relatively inexpensive. I know there's a big dam project in Canada, Northern Arctic Circle, their outlets for every vehicle has a heater. They have their outlets all over the place to deploy here. They keep their vehicles running.
How much do you think this building would cost?
Amber's initial cost was just over a million dollars. I'm still questioning the size. I have issues with the size. If each truck had its own bay, it's still not deep enough to do double, double bags. I mean, you can't park a truck behind a truck. There's just not a room to get that deep for a terrible gate. So I was, I was leaning towards something that's 120 feet long to 150 feet long and seeing if that would work. With an area that would be, for the smaller units, you know, one-third of that, two-thirds, three-thirds stored on the second story inside for landing area for storage of anything. That was a visual, right, came from what we had designed there. I wasn't married to what the design was. I was married to the idea of what could fit. And if it doesn't fit, it doesn't work, but I'm fine with that. It's just, I was trying to consolidate all of them to one place, have all public services down in one location, getting them out of a cave, essentially getting all my stuff out of a cave. And if we, if we're just, this is not going to work, nobody's going to do it. We're all in flames.
But the carport, you know, the fences and cetera, to keep stuff with the lawns in. And heaters, maybe some heater outlets would be, it's not as steadily fleecing as building, but it might just get the job done and much less cost than a million bucks.
And then you could potentially renovate one of the garage areas that no longer has a vehicle in it for something that would satisfy the.
Getting them out of the dungeon. Well.
I don't know if we're going to take a straw route, but I, I'm not inclined to spend on.
That's why.
I think John and Dave's alternate solutions would probably achieve, say, a million dollars.
I know that's lengthy for something.
Yeah, I mean, I try, but let's look and get more of an open, I mean, I'm concerned that we got the leaf truck that we all, that is a great thing, and that just sits out in the weather. So I want to get that out of the weather. I don't want to spend a million dollars to do it. But if we can accomplish the mission doing it that way, it seems like it might work.
Well, I don't know. It seems like a good idea to me to have everything in one place, to have it all down there. I hate, I don't like the idea of leaving just unused space then up here. But it would feel better to me if there was something we could do with that space to make it useful.
Well, I, I love sleep. If we rent the fire department, demolish that newer garage and demolish it. I do, for my, for my space, they're sitting a pop each other over there. And give them more of a presence on Dogwood Way.
Did we just once, please?
So, you know, where the salt pile is, did we talk about once, something down there?
That's where I'm at, and that's where I'm at.
Oh, that's where I'm at.
That's where I'm at, yeah. That's okay.
I think this sort of, maybe we need to flesh this out.
That's why.
Or, I mean, hey, people think about it, look at what existing spaces are.
I just brought.
Maybe, maybe ask Amber to give us some. I asked them, they go, less ambitious.
Well, her ambitiousness was me giving her ambitious. I can, I can parse that back and say, okay. Give me a, give me a wooden lean to. For me, I was going to canvas, deteriorates from, because I'm, I'm being concerned about the next five, ten years, but replace the canvas over top of the salt pile in the end. That's about six or seven years old already.
Yeah, I mean, the carport would be canvas, physical structure.
Just open it on one side.
Yeah, it just doesn't.
Weather protect it.
All the cost construction requirements of a standalone.
Are there pole buildings?
Excuse me?
Are there pole buildings, P-O-L-A, pole buildings that are not canvas, but other material?
Yeah, I think you could probably even, one of these steel building contractors probably has a line of things that are sort of like cardboard. You know, they don't require much of them. They don't require any, they don't require any. They don't, they don't really require electrical, rich things, so, you know, it's like a lot less expensive than a steel building.
Work on something.
Okay. Well, while we're talking about construction in general, just since we alluded to the fire truck that are apparatus. I did talk to the fire chief the other day. I asked him specifically if the vehicle that they were interested in would fit in the current bay for it. He said that it would require an extension out the back of the building. It would be, for lack of a better term, sort of like a deck or porch that just would accommodate the extra few feet that the truck is length-wise, not the width so much. We didn't get into talking about any price on that. He, of course, said that he didn't think it was going to be terribly expensive. I don't know what that means number-wise, but just to make sure everybody is clear that if we were to go for the fire truck at some point during these discussions, that would probably be part of it also.
I don't understand height. What is, like, where would you put the extension?
Out the back of it, so that the, the part of the bay, which is like a long rectangle, you would extend the long end of the rectangle out the back. You would need another five or six feet. I talked briefly to Scott about it on the phone yesterday, and he indicated, and he generally agreed with the fire chief's statement that that would not be heavy end of the truck. It would be there, so it wouldn't require the same kind of.
Unqualified drawings. All the weight is going to be on the axle, so the axles are on the existing building grade itself, but the tail end of the ladder truck only sticks out the back. The wig is still here. This is just there, so when it backs in, goes a crushing.
This is, this is a brick building.
It's, it's a brick building, which is going to be a skill. No, no, but you can do a brick out, you can do a shutout, a cantilever decking that just allows the. A cantilever deck and that just allows the truck to fit in the sleeve. Actually, that's my boss's boat.
Actually, there's no weight at all.
There's no weight. Cause all the weight's on the axle.
I guess I'm not even thinking about weight. I'm just thinking that doesn't sound like a cheap thing. I mean, I don't know.
The only, the most expensive part is going to be a lintel that supports the rest of this wall because you just cut it up. That's a steel lintel. But this is, you know, it could be cantilever back like that or it could have a post holding it like this. It's just what can you get around the back? So that's all. It would have to be, it would be engineered, but essentially it's, you're just building a jut out for the back of the truck.
Yeah. And in my mind, that's the sort of information I like to have before I decide to purchase this.
Well, and that was part of that conversation too. He volunteered about me asking that the list of answers to the questions that should be given to Scott in the next day or two. So that we would then be in a position to maybe bring him in, have him talk about the truck, the building, answer our questions from the survey thing, allow us frankly to address any issues we wanted to.
Well, this, what, what is the timeline for having to decide about this money?
That's next.
So why, why would this?
Well, right now, assuming it might be some expense. So that we could go on and into the time, you know, into the background of the rest of this. Cause I don't know if we have enough information.
We're in the weeds. I mean, we're in the weeds of projects that are not general, general public.
And Scott did come find a, um, 2019, the, the fire people gave us a pretty detailed thing. I don't know whether it needs to be updated or not, but at least it's a good beginning of facts.
And I did talk to him specifically about necessarily if we were going to move forward on this for him to come in, brief us, answer our questions regarding these things. And then we would all proceed from the same base of knowledge that he would give.
So maybe on this, on this risk we're making up, maybe we use a number like a million dollars as a possible.
Well, just.
And that's how much the truck will cost.
Actually, the truck, the key just for transparency, say the truck that they have priced out, I think that you may be looking at there will probably cost about 1.3.
1.3. And then they said they will get 700,000 on the sale of the old, old ones.
I don't think it was anywhere close.
That's gone away.
Uh, the, the sale of the, they're looking to replace the old ladder truck, which is the big one there. The number that they told me that they could get for that, that, you know, when we were talking about this a couple of years ago, it was around a hundred and a quarter at the most, I think.
Cause in the 95, in this 2019, um, statement, they said, we have a current truck in engine two. They'll be selling. So that will.
Did he attach a number to that there?
He said, we'll be able to sell them for 750,000.
Okay, that's, that's the, that's the, yeah. Ultimately, we have three trucks right now. They are looking, as Scott says, to go to two. Both of which would be.
Looking to go to one.
Both of which would be fairly new. Obviously, the new one we're talking about now and the one that was purchased, what, four or five years ago at the most. And, and those would be the two units they could have. What they could get for the third unit and also for the replacement for the ladder truck, if it's 750, that's a number maybe he can give us.
Well, do you want to just, should we just, for purposes of, um, so Jim can talk about the bond itself, pick a number, put it on that list for the moment as a guesstimate?
Yeah, I would say we go with the 1.3 if we want to use that. And then we can offset it for payback purposes or anything.
With the other truck, what I remember is we bought the truck, they completed the truck. What that means, I don't know. So that 1,300.
That's just for the truck. I think anything they want to do to customize it for their purpose would be separate. And, and while we're on that subject, they just, they made a suggestion that I did not respond to because it was way ahead of the game here. But they had mentioned in their original presentation a year or so ago, or a year and a half ago, that they wanted to maybe lease this truck. That doesn't strike me as an appropriate use of the municipal or the bond because if we're looking at 85% in the first few years, if you're amortizing this over 20 or 30 years, the bulk of it would be outside of that. Or is leasing actually feasible with the law?
Well, to answer the question directly, yes, leasing can come into play if it is a standard. If you're referencing it as part of a bond, it would be part of the general obligation bond. And I think from the perspective of the almost immediate use of those funds for the acquisition of your ladder truck and the fact that we know that those ladder trucks do have a useful life, oftentimes in excess of what the term of the bond would be, it's an appropriate way to find those funds.
Okay. So we think we could lease it. There wouldn't be a rule that would work against that.
That, that, that's correct. That could be done separate as a different type of financing outside of the bond or it could be included.
Okay. Would that then mean you'd be sort of piling interest on interest though? That we'd be paying interest on the bond bar and that we would also be paying interest on the lease?
Well, or we get a better deal for getting cash for the truck and paying the bond on it. So.
Yeah, I mean, we're looking at.
I was only responding to the fact that the fire company brought up the leasing. I don't know that they understand exactly how we were potentially looking to finance this. Whether or not it makes sense.
Just to compare those two, and you're right, you'd pay interest on either of those options, of course, on the bond as well as the lease. So it's not double interest. You'd be paying on one structure or the other as far as the financing structures are concerned. In the way that the general obligation bonds are structured, you'd be paying far less of an overall interest on my financing it that way as opposed to a lease purchase.
So we'll segue to point number two. Joe Miller is with Capital Markets. He works at municipal finance. He's got to do the fancy magic and some of the tax system here for early to current use. I met Joe back when I was a manager of real sex times. He helped us do the same thing setting our council. But he also helped us refinance and amend our bond back then as well. Joe has given a couple of presentations to different council members on a one-on-one or into an aspect that we can ask questions. Council members saying, this might be a stupid question, but it essentially in the million unit setting, you just ask. Joe's been answering questions left and right. He's prepared some presentations. We asked him to see if he thinks for our new one. That he actually looks at the dollar figure. We said eight million dollars debt and he's presented it tonight. I was going to do it before you.
Yeah, that's, that's definitely okay, Scott. Thank you very much. And thank you all for having me in this evening to, to speak with you to delve into some more detail as far as financing all of these projects that you've been discussing, not only tonight, but of course, have been discussing for a point sometime. As Scott stated, I did have the privilege to meet with a number of, of you already. And we did, in my opinion, have very productive conversations. So we'll see that a lot of what we discuss this evening is probably going to be somewhat of what we had already discussed in prior meetings, but that's okay. For the purposes of clarification and understanding. But then, as Scott also stated, when he contacted me, he said, you know, it would probably make more sense to show an amount of the financing that was more in line with the projects that we are seriously considering to get done at this particular time. So that's what I did in preparation for this evening's discussion, was put together sort of a brief handout that could complement the material that some of you may have that we have gone over. But for those that do not have that, please know that, and I do have an extra coffee here that I was going to reference that I can, I'd be glad to give to you as well because we didn't have the, the pleasure of, of meeting yet.
So I'll get a copy of that.
But we'll, we'll, we'll reference that. I think for the purposes of today's conversation, kind of just dive right in. And I will hand out what I prepared for this evening's conversation in reference to an amount of financing that's 8 million dollars. You'll see on there sort of a supplement to the one that is already in your possession. So definitely keep that one with you as well for reference. Okay. So you will see that it is a supplement to what was already discussed in a broader sense. What was already discussed, as I mentioned, lead into this conversation as much as we possibly can. Definitely through any type of questions or comments that would be answered or addressed accordingly. What I'll do is I'll move toward in this slide that is basically slide number four, slide four. And that slide is titled bond financing analysis, bond financing analysis. It does appear at first glance to be a pretty busy page. But we'll go over it in detail so that everyone has a good understanding of it. And of course, you're certainly welcome to just interrupt me at any time if you want some clarification on anything that we're discussing or anything else that you see on that page or anywhere else. So please, please know that.
Before you start.
Yes.
When, when you had spoken to us before, you said that if there, if we were going to have a sewer bond, it would be considered a series, it would be called A. And then the other things would be called B, C, or whatever. And I think what I'm hoping to hear is the amount of money that we think we're going to need for the sewer fund. What would that payment schedule be? Because then we have to look and see if we can generate that money out of sewer fees.
Yes.
And, and not put them, not put A, B, and C together the whole time.
Yeah, I understand. And that's in here.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. If you'd like me to get straight to that, I certainly can do that.
No, I just, I didn't look through the whole packet. So if you already prepared that, I'll go with your agenda.
Okay. What, what, I, I just, you know, speaking with Scott about preparing for this evening, pretty much wanted me to focus in on this page. It, it speaks to a lot with reference to the financing amounts, the amounts of payment as they are to be budgeted. As you had mentioned, adding with reference to any potential amount of the increases and more tax increases. So what I'll do then is, you know, basically just go into this sort of chart by chart, if you will. So on the left side, the, the top chart, sources and uses, sources and uses. Basically, where are you going to get the money and on what are you going to use that money that you get? So the sources are really the issuance of the new bonds, the series 2021, call it 2021A and 2021B. And the reason for the breakdown is really just that. There's going to be a new money component that we're showing here at 8 million dollars for the new projects. And then there's going to be sort of an existing money component, which comes in the form of refinancing existing bond issues that the borough currently has on its books. See, the borough has on its books a series 2011 and a series 2012 bond issue. I think one of them was referenced earlier this evening, right? In reference to the funds, the proceeds of which were used when we were growing. So those issues are still outstanding. So it makes sense oftentimes to take a very close look at those to see if there's an opportunity to refinance them in order to save money. Now, relatively speaking, there's not a large dollar amount that's still owed on those bonds. It's over a half a million dollars, which in and of itself is a large dollar amount. But combined with the new money for the new projects, that's when it can make sense for you to go ahead and refinance because of the economies of scale, things that are out there. So you're taking advantage of two things. You're taking advantage of historically low interest rate environment that we're in right now. And you're taking advantage of your option to redeem these bonds, which there's a date and time that's picked and you're since passed that date. So we take a look at that as well. And that's what we're showing in this chart. So you'll see, you have the sources and uses. The par amount, that's the amount of the bonds that are going to be issued. Think of it as a principal amount of a loan. There's a new money component. And then in each column, I break down for you what the refinancing looks like for each of those other existing bond issues, the series 2011 and the series 2012. And that's because we want to make absolutely sure that each of those could stand on its own and show you that you're going to save money by refinancing it. It's a good tool for us too, because then we let you know if it makes sense for you to include in the overall financing package. And then you'll see there's a total column there as well. That's basically what the whole series 2021 bond issue is going to look like. So first column, new money. That's the pay for the projects, finance the projects. Now, we're talking about 8 million dollars. And you might say, well, Joe, you know, you're issuing 8 million, 25,000 dollars of bonds because that's the par amount on here. But we're only getting 8 million dollars into the project fund. Now, that additional money is going to cover a few things. It's going to cover what's called the costs of issuance. And it's going to cover underwriters discount. So basically closing costs that are associated with that portion. And you'll also see there that there's a number below the 8 million, 25,000 dollars under the par. That number there, if positive, and it is for you, is called a premium. In today's market environment, we know that we could create a demand for your bonds such that institutional investors are willing to pay a little bit more than the face value of your bonds across pretty much all the maturities. And that amount that they pay above and beyond the face value of the bond, it's yours to keep. So that's cash that you get to keep and put toward your closing costs, your debt service, I'm sorry, your project fund or whatever the case may be. So by issuing 8 million, 25,000 dollars worth of bonds, you're actually going to receive in cash 8 million, 106,994 dollars. And these are live numbers, by the way, meaning that we actually look at today's, August 11th municipal bond market. And if we were looking to lock in your rates today, and we'll talk about timeline too, about how long it's going to take to get to that point. But once you lock into those rates, you basically have your, not only your rates for the full term of these bonds, we went out 30 years, but you also have your exact repayment, each and every payment set for the next 30 years. So it does not vary. It does not flow. It's fixed at that point in time. So if you have over 8.1 million dollars, what do you do with it? That's where the bottom part of that first chart comes into play. How do you use it? 8 million dollars is going to go into your project fund. That project fund is. That project fund is then available for you to draw as you need to pay the expenses to keep your project moving forward toward completion. And then you have estimated cost of issuance and underwriters discount. Again, we can categorize both of those in one category called closing costs. Estimated cost of issuance is going to cover everything except for the vendor's fee. That's the fancy name that's given in this chart, oh, underwriters discount. That's the fancy name for the vendor's fee, basically. All the other estimated cost of issuance or closing costs are lumped into that line item of estimated cost of issuance. They're not our costs, so we estimate them. But you'll see, we're going to be pretty darn close to hitting it right on that number. Just because of our experience working with other professionals that are going to be associated as part of your financing team, such as your bond counselor, such as your solicitor. And then also, there's going to be a cost to have the Borough, Borough's public debt rating updated. So you pay the rating agency, and then you'll have other costs associated with it as well, perhaps bond insurance and so forth and so on. So that's all taken into consideration in these cost of issuance. So you'll see there that those two numbers reconcile. The amount that you're basically sourcing and the amount that you're using should be exactly the same, and they are. Now, what we did was, we basically ran this, we pick an arbitrary date for now. But this would occur December first, which would be the actual closing date. So that's when monies are wired out, money goes into your project fund, and you'll be able to start losing the money in the project fund immediately on that day, in fact, because it is wired in, so it's immediately available. Now, the optional redemption date, I kind of referenced this before when I was talking about the Series 2011 and 2012 that are already on books. There's a date, it's already, it'll be preset, and it basically gives you an opportunity on or after that date to refinance your bonds again. Not only the ones that are already placed, well, I should say the new ones, it will give you an opportunity to refinance the bonds. I took back the ones that they're going to replace by refinancing, because they're going to be paid off within the next five years. And you'll see that the call date is five years, it's November fifteenth of 2026. So once you have these bonds in place for five years, you'll have the opportunity to refinance them again using desirable rates, in other words, tax exempt rates. Tax exempt rates are the ones that we use to run an analysis, because it would be a tax exempt one. Now, I mean, the statistics, on the statistics chart now, just moving right down that column, the first column on the left. You'll see a true interest cost there. That's, you could view that as the interest rate on your bond issue. So for that portion, basically, the eight million dollars going out thirty years, the interest rate is about two point two six percent, so two point two six for thirty years. Historic interest rate loan environment that we're in right now. The all-in shows you that interest rate that is inclusive of those closing costs. So you'll see that that's fairly close, because on an issue of this size, relatively speaking, there's not much in closing costs. A lot of it, a lot of it is actually driven on the size of the par amount that's outstanding. There are some fixed costs, but which driven on the size are the variable costs. And then the arbitrage yield, that's basically the rate that you cannot exceed in your project. And no worries in today's interest rate environment, because investments just aren't reaping that much return right now for you. So next chart down is the refunding results. Of course, this one is not a refunding, so we don't have any results there. And what I'll do is I'll also walk through the refunding of the 2011, that's just the next column to the right. So you have basically the same setup up top. For this one, it's going to take, and we'll see under the uses, it's going to take two hundred forty-five thousand four hundred sixty-eight dollars to make it go away, you're going to refinance. And then we allocate those closing costs to the size of the, of the par amount, so just two hundred, two hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. And then you'll see that that reconciles as well, two hundred forty-eight thousand five hundred seventy-nine dollars will be the amount that you source and use. And then same date to date. Now, if you look at the true interest cost on this, you're only looking at point six three seven percent, point six three seven. And that's really where the savings comes in, because you're taking bonds that have higher interest rates right now, you're refinancing them using bonds that have a true interest cost of point six three seven percent. And how much are you going to save? That's in the, under the refunding results, that's the next chart down. Now, there's a present value savings of those, which is basically all of the dollars saved, and we're bringing that back to what the value of those dollars are today. Very common practice in finance, and that's what we do to compare. Bring it back to today's dollar. So what's a dollar worth in three years, what's a dollar worth in five, seven, ten? We bring it back to a common point, and that's present, present value. So your present value of the savings, the actual dollars that you're going to save are over twenty-five thousand dollars on that, on that issue of 2011. Now, there's, there's some money that's left over, one hundred and nineteen dollars of additional proceeds. That's because we can only sell bonds and round lots of five thousand dollars. So there may be leftover money if you don't quite utilize under uses of top, if you don't utilize a whole five thousand dollar one. That money's yours too, you get to keep that. So that becomes present value dollars that are in the Borough's pocket. And so your net present value savings is the sum of those two numbers, over twenty-five thousand dollars for your 2011s. Now, what we do to benchmark it further is we take that number and we divide it by the amount of par, or in other words, principal, that's currently outstanding on the 2011s. And that percentage is over ten percent. Typically, a green light to really consider refinancing bonds, especially in today's interest rate environment, is anywhere between two to three percent of a present value savings. You're over ten. So clear indication that it ought to be given serious consideration for inclusion into a financing. Same thing holds true for the 2012, we walk through the same refunding analysis or refinancing analysis for that. That one isn't showing as many dollars saved, almost ten thousand, but nevertheless, it's almost three and a half percent of what's outstanding on it. So again, you're moving forward with the financing, you reach the benchmark where the Borough savings rates, it's worth serious consideration for inclusion in this financing. So then we have the total column, all told. Under this scenario, in today's market, you would issue eight million five hundred twenty-five thousand dollars worth of bonds. And what does that mean to you with reference to the repayment? We'll just move over to the chart on the right-hand side titled aggregate debt service, aggregate debt service. Once again, I wrote that down, wrote it down for a couple of reasons. One, again, wanting, wanting to demonstrate, and for our own purposes too, we want to see how it looks each and every year, because that's pretty much what we're doing when we're comparing, comparing it to say, refinancing candidate or not. We take your existing payments versus the new payments that you could have, and if there's a difference, if that payment's lower, then typically it would make sense to do, just a matter of what level. But to answer that, the question that was posed, we do want to sort of focus in on that new money column on the, on the, on the chart to the right, the aggregate debt service chart, the new money column, which is second from the left. That is what is required as your annual payment to repay the financing for these projects at an eight million dollar level in today's interest rate environment. So you're looking anywhere from about three hundred and seventy to about three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars if, if you begin making that full payment next year, budget of fiscal year 2022. There are other ways that we could structure it, so that in years 2022, 23, 24, you know, out to when you actually pay off this debt from the existing loans, it would level itself out after that. But I think that in your case, perhaps, we can look at it, but because there are basically two sources of revenue for this, perhaps it doesn't matter for source being sewer fund, source being general fund, right?
Can I ask a quick question on that, to address Patty's question here? If we're hypothetically looking at eight million dollars of borrow, six million of that would go towards sewer projects, is it safe to assume that the new money payment for sewers only would be three quarters of the numbers or what have you?
That's exactly right, yes. Yep, yeah, if you wanted to break that down further, that's correct.
Actually, the waste water treatment plant, big oil, it's what you see, so hey, yeah.
Well, isn't it, but I'm just trying to make it simple to make sure I'm understanding correctly that. So I mean, if we were to look at that new money column under the aggregate debt service, we could have three quarters of it in one sub-column, and the remaining quarter in a separate column to the new money.
Okay.
Yeah. We're going to have to know that to be able to set fees.
Right, once we determine what the total is, I mean, we're looking at a follow marker of eight million twenty-five thousand, we don't know if that's going to be the. Exactly, verbal word in the range, I think.
So you'll actually need to know that for the ordinance.
Yes.
Part of the ordinance. Somebody is better at math than I am, Renee. What is, Renee, what is three quarters of three seventy-two?
Two seventy-nine, two eighty. What'd you say, two eighty?
Two eighty. So that, yeah, that, if that amount is going to be allocated to sewers, then two eighty would be the allocation of the sewer payment. The monies that have, the monies that are going to be paid toward this debt out of the sewer fund.
So we have ninety-two on the general obligation and
Yes.
two eighty on the sewer. So that first column, yeah, first column we've got in the, I think.
Yeah, that, that's correct, because again, it's relative.
We've been told to be able to say, like, bond counsel, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, it's always, it's always a good practice to do that. The thing is, you don't need necessarily to add an additional one on it, but we could talk to counsel about that too. You could certainly just have a sewer in a general.
I just wanted to make sure I was on.
Yeah, yeah, meaning that, meaning that the breakout could be allocated and put together with the refinancings that are already general. So you don't have, you know, more than, say, two series out of the same issue.
So to continue with your conversation, if ninety-two thousand is general obligation of new money we had come up with, and we're already taking fifty yearly toward the fire truck. So we already have that, basically, fifty thousand dollars.
We would have to bridge the other forty-two.
So we have to decide how we're going to generate forty-two thousand dollars.
Well, and Renee, Scott, and you don't get on this, we've already saved a hundred and seventy-five thousand for the truck from the last several years of putting that fifty thousand aside. So if we were to spread that number out, we would basically be covering the first four years, or thereabouts. There's that forty thousand and a hundred and seventy-five, at least. That would, that would do it.
And so then after those first four years, four or five years, that forty-two thousand, we have to come from just another place in the budget.
Well, it is, I mean, I think it definitely works, we can build more things, and we're.
Well, did, did we budget things for the waste water treatment in this year's budget as well?
Mostly design stuff. We're going to try to use a pipe intercepter, and that's sort of design basis, well, with the biggest chunk of money that's being spent is solely the design of the new pump station.
I also have a general question, is how do you decide what your best term for these? Whether you want fifteen-year on, or twenty-five, or thirty? Logic says to me it would be less expensive to do it for fifteen years overall, but are there other reasons that you would?
Yeah, well, it's definitely less expensive to do, but then it becomes a matter of, you know, acceleration of repayment into this short period of time, which of course makes the payment a lot bigger and the budget or tax revenue, sewer revenue, whatever the case may be. So that, that's definitely a component of this, but also useful life of the assets as well has to be taken into consideration. And the assets that we're talking about here, insofar as, you know, sewer projects and so forth, they should build for something to be taken out thirty years, if that's, if, if, if that's what you're looking to do.
Most of your people that do this, in most of communities, do they intend to opt for the long term?
They do, yes.
Rather than, even though overall they're paying more.
That's correct, yeah. And it, it also has to do with, so useful life, but then you can also look at it at a different component of useful life. So useful life's going to be out there over thirty years. So if you, even if you squeeze it down to twenty years, say. Okay, so now, over the next twenty years, you have the users of that system that you're billing to use it, paying into it. Well, that's a good thing, right? Because it's like pay as you go, pay as you use, but it's almost then, you know, what happens after that twenty, twenty years? And then you have maybe new people moving in or something like that, and the debt's already paid off, and they get the benefit of the system, kind of because the, the users that were there the first twenty years paid off all the debt.
Well, isn't it sort of like a mortgage, a fifteen-year mortgage would definitely save us? Would save a fourteen-year money. However, there is point of, can you really afford the annual payments of a fifteen-year mortgage versus a thirty-year?
Yep, yeah, that's exactly right. That's what it boils down to, is affordability, you know, how much burden do you want to put on, and rate payers and taxpayers. And then also consider that, hey, if the asset's going to be out there and usable, you know, you want it to be paid for by the current users of those systems. So the users are going to be out there in years twenty-one through thirty. You want them to pay toward the system as well, instead of trying to compress it into the years of one through twenty. It's just different ways to look at it, but I mean, you asked, you know, what's common practice? And it is common practice to, to match it as long as you can.
I was at the meeting, you guys talked about increasing the sewer rates to make up, like, all of this? Two hundred and eighty thousand dollars, you know, for our payment for the sewer.
Yes.
I love that discussion. And do we have any concept of how much that is?
We haven't done that part yet, no. We're trying to see with the new number, like the.
Nancy and I, we were doing some calculations. He, the other day, just being sort of, again, really rappy on the kind of numbers on it and. One day we were coming up that if, if there were thirty-one hundred households, just sort of rounding things out, that it was coming out to like thirty-one dollars per quarter, per user, in a very, very, very rounded numbers. I mean, I would never stand behind those numbers. But that's a very, but I think, right, exactly, you were involved in that. And what were you going to say?
Well, I can interject a couple things. If you mentioned like three quarters, you know, sewer fund. If, like, we use, as John, the sewer fund is six point five million. So in reality, that would be eighty percent, so there would be more than three hundred thousand sewer fund. So that would lower our general fund liability by another, what was it? And fifteen thousand per year. And on the, if you said three hundred thousand dollars, you'd have the a hundred dollars per household.
For years, and we're going to have twenty for quarters. So we weren't terribly far off. No, because we were going from your thirty years at fifteen million.
Yes.
We were just kind of saying, cut that in half.
Yeah.
Take it for, you know, to really back.
Right. And that's why it's still one of to look at these numbers, which are more realistic for the projects that are being considered.
So make a hundred dollars per household, you know, here, per year.
Twenty-five a quarter.
And yet the actual would be, we have certain users that have, like, commercial users and things, it would be much higher.
That's thinking even, just even. Households on the three hundred thousand, three thousand, you know, and not the third years. But so the third year is kind of the one hundred.
And since we haven't had a rate increase for eleven years.
A sewer rate increase?
No.
And to that point, did you share that, did you share that information? Did you share that information with the entire council?
The others, yes, it was all the councils, all councils, the same ones for a rate, Alfa Sam, yes.
We can be still way under the Alfa Sam number, even if you went for the hundred dollars, like twenty-five dollars a quarter.
They're doing ninety, so right now, right now, they're a hundred and twenty-eight, twenty-five per quarter at Alfa Sam customers. That's a burden.
And we would be looking at how much for order.
Yeah, if we're averaging three thousand.
No, I mean, what would the number be, a quarter, you know, compared to the Alfa Sam?
I just, I hit zero. What's that? I guess, what is it now, plus twenty-five?
Right, yeah, because I don't know what our current.
So our current is plus twenty-five, forty-three, plus twenty-five, sixty-eight. And compared to Alfa Sam, a hundred and twenty-eight, twenty-five, there you go.
Sixty-eight, twenty, twenty.
I'm going to ask a question here. Maybe I can.
Forty-three, seventy-four, the current. Twenty-five of, you know, in terms of three, that is percentage plus, yeah.
We have been increases for the past ten years. So we have reaped the benefit of those, of that development. Now that development is built out, and we have to begin to absorb the real cost of the sort.
Well, so is that going to need to increase it even more?
I don't know.
Well, that's a good question, we should, that is something, there's, there's real sort of work to be done to really be sure we know what we're.
Well, for preparing apples to apples, the Alfa Sam rate to our rate.
Yeah.
That's, the Alfa Sam rate doesn't have any tap-in fees associated with it. So we are just talking the rates. If we still get a few tap-in fees, it would mitigate some of our costs as opposed to adding anything to everything, so. I mean, we're just not counting on the tap-in fees from this, going forward, even if we get some more, which we should.
I think the thing that we, you have to bear in mind is, one, that increase in sewer rates is very reasonable. And secondly, I personally, when I read right here, it said that the stability of these interest rates is not guaranteed, it isn't all that great. In other words, if you wait a year, these rates could go down, they can't go down much, but they could go much higher. So now is the time to proceed. If you're interested in a bond issue, that'll cover these needed capital costs. Now is the time to proceed. Every delay incurs a high degree of risk. You have, you know, may not get that opportunity for many years if you miss it now. So there is, there is a degree of urgency towards proceeding with a bond issue.
I think what you said, Dave, to some extent, for getting us, Dave and Patty together, for getting us on this bandwagon and stuff. We're kind of pushing this forward because we do only have a few months. Besides the interest rate issues, we only have a few more months together if we want to make this happen.
I would agree completely with John, as I think most of the country.
I think that from Jill Ratajk's report to us about the projects that are necessary for wastewater treatment plan, we almost don't have a choice. These are things that, it's our obligation to make sure that these things are in the condition that they need to be. It is just those, that other money, that other million dollars. I guess the other two million dollars, one would go toward the fire truck, but now it's going to be one million and three. So then, one of another million would give us an opportunity to address some of the issues.
I'm going to start talking, were you finished?
So, yeah, I wanted to be sure to show where the new money component was going to be. And then it is relative, so, and then you'll see what the repayments are for this, for the existing bonds that will be replaced by the new ones. And then basically that tracks down to the chart that's on the bottom, sort of on the left-hand side, that funnels into the aggregate savings. So you'll see there year over year, fiscal year over fiscal year, what your payments were on those two, or are on those two bonds. And then you'll see what the, what the new one is going to be for both of them and then what those savings are each and every year. But that's why, you know, that's the aggregate, but we also want to take a look at that separate for you as well. I know that that's certainly, you know, not the main focus here, but did want to let you know how they look as standalone to basically demonstrate that they do make sense as far as refinancing candidates for inclusion. But yeah, that's, that's what I intended to go over this evening, if there are, you know, questions or comments, certainly.
This one, that's a question, the refinancing of the existing bonds, I mean, certainly uses saving, but that, that would be included in series B, right, with general obligations.
That's, yes, that's correct. Yeah, that's the way that, that we would do it. You know, we would consult, of course, with, with your council, bond council, in the effort to, you know, put the most appropriate structure in place for you. But that's the way that we're certainly looking at it at this point.
If my notes are correct, and my memory, which is not all that good. As I remember in our previous meetings, from God Council and Kate Gerson said that it was legally required to segregate these two projects.
So Renee, the twenty-two, the aggregate debt service, that three hundred and seventy-two thousand. But if we consolidated the two outstanding bonds, that's five hundred and twenty-six thousand that we have to come up with. We're already paying, am I right, ninety for the library? And ninety-seven for.
I end up thinking about, because my, my memory serves me right, it looks like some of the numbers for the library, and John might be transposing, so to see where the source was, to tie these together. But all of them, I believe, twenty-eleven is library, that's the entire problem.
The twenty, twenty-twelve.
Twenty-twelve is library.
This, twenty, the libraries came off in twenty-four. We pay about ninety or fifty, and about ten in interest. Have we had something around?
Yeah, that's, I just referenced some notes, and that's exactly, I have twenty-twelves for the library project, whereas the twenty-elevens were for a wastewater treatment, another miscellaneous capital improvements. I think those miscellaneous capital improvements are still what's outstanding, you know. That was paid off, yeah, it's only the capital project part of it.
So you're saying we, we claim at least ninety thousand towards principal on the library bond, which is the series two thousand twelve here. What are we paying on, in principle, on the other one?
The twenty-eleven, is that, is that fifty-two or forty-seven, fifty, twenty-eight, fifty-two? Is that, am I reading that?
So we're finding a hundred, we're basically carrying over the hundred and forty that we would be budgeting every year.
That's going to get past us, we will, yeah.
Okay, and it sounds like it pretty much bridges most of the difference then, right?
Well, the problem, no.
I mean, if you include the fire truck.
Plus, whole other topic, if with the library, that, that money that's already in our budget is paying that debt, that bond. At the end of that, in twenty-five, the money that's there, we probably need to take a look at it and see, okay, what do we, do we need to do something for the library because we have that money, like, does it need a new roof for?
Those that we were hoping to do is that at the end of this term, which would just be one payment for, which doesn't really change what you're saying, but for at least one payment, I'm at least hoping that, say, that hundred thousand will get into a reserve account as library repairs going forward and be able to be drawn down and then keep, keep repeating that line item. So there's always money in there and forth, there is an emergency repair down there that we, we are trying to budget each year, we're going to have a pot, at least a pot of it.
Right, but I mean, the.
But that doesn't really change what you're saying.
Yeah, the debt service basically, after the first five years, gets down to the current total. It's going to be less than what we're talking about using the current allocations to pay off the original bonds plus the modest sewer increase.
Well, I don't know, because now you're confusing me. Like, basically, the two thousand eleven and two thousand twelve, I mean, we're saving thirty-five thousand dollars, which when you're talking about eight or eleven million dollars feels like.
Well, I'm not saying we're saving that so much as every year we have been allocating X amount of dollars, ninety, fifty-three in our current ongoing budgets.
Oh, you're saying we won't have to after five.
We won't have to, you know, and that number, as you can see in the debt service, basically reduces down almost a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the other ones.
Because those original bonds, the library bond was originally like seven million. So more or less equivalent to what we're starting.
I mean, I'm, I'm working, as I'm sure everybody is, within the context of the current budgets on a year-to-year basis. And is that, how is this going to compare five years down the road? And to me, it looks like it compares rather favoritively.
And I think once we do this, that we should, and that's part of why Renee's here tonight, so that she kind of knows what people are interested in understanding, is that these kind of things, we will be presenting, we will have to get together before we make any decisions, see what the actual cost is out of our pockets, so. You know, seeing how much is the other bond and how much is.
So what we need to do, from what I understand, from what you said the other day, is we have to be specific about the project list. And so that's work that we're going to have to do. You know, the Hatch is getting the sewer treatment plan numbers, sharpening their council lists, and so that's it. And so the other, the other projects will have numbers associated with them too.
Yes.
And so can you help us with a timeline of what, what we need to do to have this move forward?
Yeah.
I can just interject there. If I, you know, remember right, again, from previous meetings, the very last the thing, the most urgent, or the first thought most urgent, I'm sorry. But the first thing that needs to be done is that letter of appointment.
Which we were planning on doing on Monday.
Right, we should discuss now and actually do it on the next meeting session. And then after that, the next, the next thing is, as you point out, getting the details so that bond council prepared the ordinance itself. Those are the two things.
So the appointment resolution, you might explain what that is.
Yeah, so what that appointment resolution is.
That's the place. Working with the process.
Okay.
So, so what that appointment resolution is, it's, it's the formal appointment of representatives of your finance team. So the bond underwriter as well as the bond council. We will all work together in the effort to move the process forward on the boroughs behalf. So with that formal appointment, those formal appointments, we're basically given the directive to move toward that end for you. And so what we do from, from that, formally appointed, is we begin collecting some financial information from you. I'm like, that's.
We talked about it briefly the last week.
We did, we gave you the email, so we'll check email.
I'm sure with Pam, I'm sure with D-Cell.
Okay, good.
You're asking for details on, like, the top ten sewer customers. And, and, and they're going to break down between residential and commercial sewer customers. So we're working, that's a, Pam, and they, I think it's something, a week or ten days turnaround.
Yes, and that's fine, I want to get that out as quickly as possible so that we do have that time. But, so what I did, what we would do with that information and also your regular financial information, like your annual audits, we basically prepare that packet along with what's called a preliminary official statement. The official statement is what's actually associated with the transaction, but this is preliminary until things are finalized. The official statement is the document that includes everything that a potential investor would need to know about making a wise decision about investment in the borough's bonds. So it's information about the borough, it's information about the bond issue itself, its purpose, what their funds being used for and so forth. So that information is all we. What their funds being used for and so forth, so that information is all incorporated. Into what's first a preliminary official statement. And that preliminary official statement, along with the financial information, is sent to a rating agency. That rating agency will then review it, and we'll have a ratings call, and a few days later. You will have your official public rating for your series twenty twenty-one bond issue. Once we have that rating, that's when we actually go to market. And market your bonds, generate the demand in your bonds, to really go to work on your behalf in effort to get you the best best rate possible. And then, once that's done, we can lock it in at that particular time. And when it's locked in, as I had mentioned earlier, that's it, it's basically locked in, so you have your interest rate set. And then you have your payments set too, from here to the final maturity, from there to the final maturity. Uh when you pay off the bonds, nothing changes unless you would take the option to change it. Upon or after that optional redemption date that we put in there at five years from the date they do it, so twenty twenty-six. Uh and then, once that's done, once we lock everything in, uh we move toward the closing itself. So there'll be closing documentation, so we're we'll be working in conjunction, not only with the borough, but with its bond council. In the effort to to make that happen, there'll be redemption notices and, you know, it'll go out to your paying agent to redeem the current bonds and all of that.
So Monday, what we'll do on Monday is that we will adopt a resolution, it's an appointment resolution. To example what he was saying, to get the process started.
Can you, oh, I'm sorry, can you speak, since these two ladies weren't here for these other reasons, can you? Tell them what you told us about the fact that even though we have the premium, and you think these things are going to sell pretty easily. That your firm or your bank was willing to basically buy them up if there was some intervening event that, you know, would change the nature of the market.
Yeah, yeah, that that's correct, um you know, it it is a low-grade environment that we're in right now, is, you know, a in-market where. These bonds are desirable, but nevertheless, you know, things could happen that change the market. It could be news that comes in from an event that happens overseas, say, who knows what that may be? And it could start to change the market, so not only the stock market that we hear go up and down. But the bond market and even the municipal bond market as well. So if there's an event that would occur in or around pricing day, lock-in day for your for your bonds to lock in the rate. It could start to move the desirability and the and the pricing, the rates of your bonds higher. Well, what we do as a financial institution on behalf of our customers, so we have capital cash. That we're willing to stand behind our customers' bond issues by actually purchasing them ourselves. And taking them into our own account, our own inventory, thereby which taking on the risk. That we're gonna end up with them at those lower rates. Uh but also, it does something for you as our customer, it locks in those rates where we feel that they should be at that particular time. And not in today's, but in the, uh as we discussed the other day, in the larger presentation from the fifth. Uh there is a slide or two in there, one of which, slide or two that that touches on this. One of which actually has a chart in there that shows, it's a list of the actual deals. We stood behind in the market, and you'll see, you know, ranges from. If my memory serves me right, probably upwards of about seventy percent of the bonds that were to be sold. We actually bought them and and brought them in-house. And I think on that list, maybe the highest dollar amount of the issue is probably about eleven million dollars. And again, that's our own money that we're coming out of pocket with to stand behind our customers. To make sure that you're getting the best best deal possible.
So can I make a comment this last few?
Yeah. One last thing, I have a question. Let us talk for just a minute in general about audibility and what impact that has on this deal.
Yeah, it has uh has has a tremendous uh lot of impact on the deal. Uh you you have a a very favorable uh public debt rating right now, it's a double A minus, so it's a very strong investment grade rating. Uh double A minus is kind of on the cusp where, you know, we could, you can issue without any type of further enhancement. Meaning that investors are, you know, very keen on that level of credit rating. Uh but there are times when, you know, the market does add inflow and it may be more favorable for you to. Uh get bond insurance as further enhancement. Or further security that the investors in your bonds are going to get paid and paid when they're supposed to on time. Uh we do that comparison for you, uh and and then show you, demonstrate what it's gonna be, so you'll have. A premium, a one-time premium for the bond insurance that you pay upfront. And that will have an effect on the interest rates that we can lock you in there. If the net effect is that overall, the cost of interest at lower rates. Is gonna more than offset that upfront premium for you, we'll let you know that, and it's a wise choice to go ahead and put that in place, the bond insurance. If it's not gonna provide benefit to offset its costs, then it's not going to be beneficial for you. So a double A minus rating in today's market, I've seen it really depends upon the timing of it at that point in time. But we're gonna do, you know, our best to work with you to. Do everything that we possibly can to make sure that the credit rating agency is fully aware of how strong financially the borough of the board is.
So whichever credit rating agency is being used, is there a possibility that they look at our books and say. You know what, this is better than it was in two thousand and eleven.
Yes.
We think your rating should go from double A minus to double A.
Yep.
Is that a possibility?
Oh, definitely, just had one the other day actually come in. They went from an A to an A plus.
Oh, that's.
Yeah, yeah, but uh, yeah, and and you know, what we'll do is we 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 do our internal analysis of it as well. Uh we'll get a a, we get a list of questions, comments that we expect uh the analysts to go over and. You know, Scott will be on the call, we'll be on the call right along with them. Uh and if, you know, there's anyone else that you feel, you know, based upon that it's talking points that would add value. Um certainly, you know, they they're welcome to join the call as well, but. Yeah, so it it it's certainly possible, and that's kind of what I was referring to when I said, we're gonna do everything we can. To make sure that the analyst knows, you know, what's going really well tomorrow.
I have a question for you, Joe, from what is the timeframe from preliminary statement to closing? Today is August eleventh, assuming that the appointment letter is adopted by council on Monday. What is, when can you expect the close?
Yeah, so close, the final closing, now a lot has to take place, though. Remember, we're able to kind of lock in those rates first, we're able to lock them in about a month before closing. Reason being, it it's another month to closing, it's not only the legal paperwork and so forth. And we have to do as far as closing documentation, but a lot of it has to do with notifications. There's gonna be a submission to the Department of Community and Economic Development. Uh and that submission process plus the time that they have to have, that in their possession, takes about a month. And then also, it runs concurrently at the same time, you'll have uh call notifications go out for your twenty-elevens and twenty-twelves. And uh call notifications require a thirty-day notice as well, so that that that's why that extra month is still in there. So I would say, you know, like you mentioned, today's today's date, August eleventh, we're probably looking at maybe. Into uh. Middle of October to lock in rates and, you know, get us, I'm sorry, no. Yeah, mid, mid, yeah, probably around that time, end of September to 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 lock in the rates. And then uh probably end of October, end of November to do the actual closing.
Doesn't it? Isn't it, is it, I believe it's necessary, what you're, what you're saying presupposes that the ordinance is adopted prior to that.
Yeah, there's there's a couple ways that you could go about that as well, and, you know, we could work with what works best for the borough. And what bond council suggests as well, uh you could en- enact the debt ordinance with the actual locked-in rates. If you wanted to do it that way, or you could enact an ordinance that is called a parameters ordinance. And that would be sort of a not to exceed, that gets you a dollar amount, an interest rate, a repayment schedule. That you will definitely not exceed any of those specific parameters therein, and you're able to move forth with that as well.
That was the recommendation bond council to go with the.
Parameters.
The maximum parameters.
Okay, yeah.
Well, due to, one, it gives us more flexibility, and secondly, due to the liquidity of some of the estimates. It it gives us. It it gives us a more reliable. Limit limit on the funding, it will, we're we're more likely to have sufficient funding if we take that option. Than rather than trying to, uh, get the requirements down to the last any degree this time.
Yeah, yeah, so so then that would be, that would be something that could be done sooner rather rather than 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 later.
And it keeps us moving.
Exactly.
Keeps it trying to hold.
Yeah, it doesn't impede our process, so to speak, because once we're appointed, you really get moving full steam on your behalf. Toward the rating, you know, making sure we do everything we can with that in price.
Before you make these applications, statements, that, you will need that ordinance approved.
Oh, yeah, definitely, definitely, yes, yeah. Yeah, you need, that's part of the submission to to state, there's some advertisements that go along with it.
So that will be next, I don't think, council action after the appointment.
I'm looking at the second meetings, I'll probably care about time, but we may do some more expeditions, Monday, Friday, Saturday, so at least we have a private time where we can do it anytime soon, so yes.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's great, see, there's a there's an advertisement notification, there's specific dates on that. Uh for D C D requirements, local government unit, that act, but, you know, any, it's just gotta be advertised anywhere from three to thirty days prior. To the meeting at which you enact the debt ordinance. And there's a post uh advertisement as well, that has to be published no more than fifteen days.
Subsequent.
Subsequent to.
Subsequent to the law.
Oh, yeah, subsequent to, so, but, yeah, we were, again, in conjunction with the borough and in conjunction with um bond council. To make sure, in fact, we put together a, we call it a schedule of events, it's basically just a step-by-step process. That we go through to make it very clear, along with the dates, that estimated dates that each and every event or task should be due by. So it gives every, it gives everybody a clear timeline as to, and and it also gives, you know, who's working on it. Is it the bond underwriter, is it the borough, is it the bond council, your solicitor, who who is it? So we will, we'll get that out to you soon, it's it's.
So if we appoint you on the sixteenth, when would we, let's see what we have on to do this next?
Oh, like, yeah, two days later, three days later, yeah. Yeah, I agree with you, in fact, they did, yeah, but I I I work closely with my analyst, John, and we we were pointed to. Uh a transaction last coming up, a meeting last night, he already had it together today.
Thank you, it's been very helpful.
Oh, you're very welcome, thank you once again for for having me in. And again, if there's any questions, comments that come out of our conversation this evening, certainly let me know. I'd be happy to to answer and address them accordingly.
Thanks for having me.
The next topic I want to bring up, we covered with Sean, Sean Garmont referred him to, and Shul. He came in his focus too, but from the, uh, the ratio, he just, he accepts to explain exactly what Joe just told. He makes sure our process is thorough, if we report to the state if necessary, but also he's guaranteed to the investors, you know, it's up to you. He's also guarantee, he's also guaranteed to the investments, investors looking at our projects, that we're in good faith, a cool, faithful faith as well, too. He's assuring, representing us at the borough, that when we say what we're gonna do. That's a generalization, I'll put it that way. He too will have tasks for us to accomplish, not much as extensive as his own. But his role is to make sure that we fulfill the D C D requirements, because it's non-electoral data, we're taking on our own. The moth is is not, there's not part of the, we are current, right? Uh he will be, he did send us a draft resolution, Kate has it right now, it is in the party agenda on Friday, on Monday to enact it, to report that vote. So we wanted to talk about timeframes, he just mentioned again, he was a little more optimistic, thinking we could do this, well, he said October, he thought even September. October seemed to be more realistic, yeah, across the middle.
Yeah, September, I I'm thinking, yeah, October, uh probably to lock in the pricing. And then call it another month or so, you know, that's why we built in 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 our analysis, the December first date. That probably has a little bit of time built in there, sort of a conservative estimate date for closing. But nevertheless, I'm thinking it's gonna be pretty pretty darn close. Now remember, you know, rewind about a month or more, and that's when you lock in the price. So that's where I kind of got the date for lock-in for you, um into like mid-October, is what I saw.
And now that's the question, I know you said, when we lock in that rate, that tells us where our trade chain is on the right.
Yeah, we're locking, exactly, we're gonna have your payments set at that time, um for the life of the of the issue.
So we know that by the standpoint, well, which leads me to our last thing, it's Monday, what better, a better timeframe, but we are still. Aiming for a goal of November fifteenth to develop the budget, a month sooner than usual. We're still aiming for it. Even with all this you keep throwing in us, we're still aiming for November passing of the budget. So uh next week in in your meeting, I mean, we'll have a wage projections for twenty twenty-two. We did a split, we gave you two percent for wage adjustments, all across the board, we'll see where that goes with negotiations and other things. Okay, and the next week will be after our meeting with the attorney on the third page. Yes, we'll sell it, yes, um, so we're actually looking at this, between August sixteenth. And November second, I will present the budget to council, we will have the inner, we will have our meetings for budget, we'll have the committees come in. I want to leave you to fill for the crowd, if you recall, last year, we we met on Mondays, in those off weeks. We are considering, would you consider, we are asking, would you consider maybe twice a week, Monday, Wednesday? Mentally fresh, we're not gonna wait a week to look at numbers, like, we look at numbers on a Monday, we got the statistics on Wednesday, in fact. And whack, and I hate to throw whack at them, but get the budget done more efficiently, if we move along. Maybe using a work session or whatever means to. Deep handle some details, reception, have the budget being standalone, twice a week over several weeks. Starting when? Oh, probably beginning September, right, so we thought, yeah, all.
I'm.
You need to talk to.
I'm probably anxious to, if we are more compressed out.
So we're thinking maybe the second whole week of September? Or maybe start the ones after the regulations of that, but. You know, because I, she started her next season, I need a couple of weeks to break this out, so they would start mid-September, moving to fall of October. But what better to ask for, once you figure out how more to support her?
If we're having uh extra meetings, we might have different. If we're having extra meetings, we might have a different, a different time today.
That's fine.
I think we only have to. Obviously, there is everyone's time constraints right now.
I mean, if you had a Monday, one day meeting, what is that, every other week we're talking, or is that every week? I mean, I would, there's no way, with soccer season, that I'd be able to take all of those. So if you wanted to have one during the day, you know.
With, with those.
I don't miss it anymore. I have to, I have to pull up the schedule, but, I mean, we have.
What Tuesday's like?
Well, I have to pull up my schedule. So it's not always like we got games on Tuesday, Thursday, or Monday, Wednesday, or something like that. They, they kind of are all over the place sometimes, they're off school sometimes, they're seven P M., so. We talk to them every day.
Is this something?
It's not responsible, right?
Is this something we can adjust as we go, just to see how?
We could try.
Yeah, when we, you know, start off the process, I'm thinking we'll need more.
And I can look at my schedule and see if there's another day or. Yeah. I mean, in addition to that, are all my, all in children's, like, our million. So I don't know.
I'm a fan of that, I get it, I'm on the point, so.
Yeah, but I, but I'll look and I'll let you know.
Okay.
Well, I mean, meetings, it wouldn't be necessary that, this is a, Scott, you're there, yeah. Obviously, would it be necessary that everyone be here, or just the four of us would be through?
We might have everybody present, we have the building technology, you know, if we do, so. What happens is, is we also get the general fund, but we look at the other smaller bunches that are impacted by general fund. So what we're trying to figure out, what we can do first, we can do general fund first this time, and then we go look at current library parts. Or do we do those, and then go back to the general fund?
I'm just, I'll be there, but I'm just saying to accommodate everyone's schedule, can it be less than a full council, can it be a working group?
You, you at least, I would say at least a four room.
Four room, yeah.
But if there's a subject that you really don't have a general, just, you don't have to.
Just like tonight, if you couldn't be here, it would be, I think, appropriate notification if we didn't have seven, it would be okay.
So, so the small budget's a lot easier than just to go out and start the process.
It sounds like an admirable goal, and I think we can commit ourselves to, hope you reach, to help you reach that.
Okay. Well, this is going to be your part of the program. Council, everyone here for this evening, I thank you.
Thanks for the appointments.
I do, this is my hope for you, this, this, setting you on that, not on a purpose, but for good intentions. It is my belief that this is actually going back into the borough, the advancements to keep us off the deepies right now when it comes to the sewer plant. My focus on the whole part is really to put equity back into the downtown quarters, as it seems that we all know, people enjoy. I had a resident tell me it was a disaster, that was back in nineteen.
Tell you what was a disaster?
The downtown quarter, because I heard it was lights and everything, I was like, it's a disaster. I invited them to come to this meeting. I would invite that, and then I said, well, how many councilmen tell me? I don't, I didn't agree with the adjective, but I agree with the sentiment, is the residents built the downtown quarter once, we should take ownership of it, take care of the second time for the next generation. And with L E D lights and standard rails that are, you know, who are technology, and metals, which do well as well, especially since we're working on the southern side of the corridor now. And that's why I'm hoping the conference will play a part as well. I thank you for talking, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks, gentlemen, thank you, very much appreciated. Good night.
All right, you too.